We're going to go ahead and get started, folks. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trent Magid, David Roseacker, Jeffrey Moore, Michael Pate, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, our vice chair just left. She didn't feel well. I am Greg Rosenbaum, chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, planning director, Sherri Rockwell, acting assistant planning director, Eric England, planning manager, Mike Carter, planning board administrator, Alan Thielen from the city law department, and Debbie Hightower and Lisa Agon's secretaries. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. This board met this morning, reviewed all the cases, and visually inspected sites. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up there, just right here, folks, if you need one. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. These cases will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When given testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has previously been said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the city council for another public hearing and final disposition by the city council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the city council. Lastly, upon the advice of the law department, all communications to the board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the planning department so that they are made a part of the public record. The department will then transmit all that information to the board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. Before I start with the consent cases, agenda item number 11 has been withdrawn, so that case has been withdrawn, will not be taken up at this time. All right. The consent cases. Agenda item number three, case C-10-14-44, C-12-14-45. Applicant: David Steyer and Ken Hagan. It is on consent for approval. Request revised preliminary plat approval of Majestic Point, lots 244 through 252, and outlots I through N, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and MU. This was laid over from the June 6 meeting. Location: southwest of 168th and State Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number eight, case C-10-18-162, C-12-18-163. Applicant: Holy Name Housing Corporation. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Villa Rose on 15th, a minor plat inside the city limits with rezoning from R-535 and CC to R-7. Location: 3107 and 3119 South 15th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number nine, case C-10-18-164, C-12-18-165. Applicant: Donald and Denella Suesi. It is on for approval. Request preliminary and final plat approval of Suesi Acres, a minor plat outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR. Portions of the property is located within an ED Environmental Resources overlay district. Location: southeast of Blair High Road and Pawnee Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C-10-18-166, C-12-18-167. Applicant: Frank Creche Trust. It is on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Legend Trails, lots 1 through 90, outlots A through F, a subdivision outside the city limits with waivers to Section 53-82 street width, Section 53-93 curb and gutter, and Section 53-99 sidewalks, along with rezoning from AG to DR. Location: northwest of 222nd and Q Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Agenda item number 12, case C-10-18-168. Applicant: Woodsonia Real Estate. It is on for approval. Request approval of an MCC major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 5645 North 90th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-18-171. Applicant: City of Omaha. It is on for approval. Request rezoning from GI to R-5. Location: 1708 Sailor Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C-10-18-172, C-11-18-173. Applicant: Eric Weisler. It is on for layover. Request rezoning from GC and R-7 to R-7 along with approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Property is located within an NCE Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement District. Location: southeast of 10th and Pierce Streets. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-10-18-174, C-7-8-166, C-7-97-225. Applicant: Tim Jacoby Children's Hospital Foundation. It is on for approval. Request approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow hospital services general in a GEO district. Property is located within an ACI-265 overlay district, and approval of the expansion of the ACI-2 overlay district. Location: northeast of 84th and Dodge Street and northwest of 84th Street and Indian Hills Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-00-40. Applicant: SCM 10X Omaha 14901 LLC. It is on for layover. Request approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Greyhawk. Location: 14901 West Maple Road. Anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. And finally, agenda item number 20, case C-7-18-175. Applicant: Geraldo Velar Fernandez. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow automotive sales in an NBD. Property is located within an ACI overlay district. Location: 5026 South 24th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Okay, that are the, those are the consent cases. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent cases.
Making a motion for approval of cases number 3, 8, 9, 12, 15, 18, and 20 as contained in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, do we have a motion for layover cases on consent?
Motion to layover cases 17 and 19?
And 10.
And 10, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Mr. Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, the cases that we just went over on consent, those are done. No further action will be taken today. If you were here for one of those cases, you are welcome to leave, or you're welcome to stay and watch the proceedings. We'll move on with the first two cases. They are administrative only. That means no public testimony will be taken on the first two cases. Agenda item number one is case C-10-18-61, C-12-18-62. Applicant: Woodsonia 204 Center LLC. Request final plat approval of West Center Commons, a subdivision located outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to MU. This was laid over from our July meeting. The location: southeast of 204th Street and West Center Road. May we hear from the city?
Sure. The applicant has requested a layover. I anticipate this to be back on the agenda next month, but therefore we are recommending layover.
Okay, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Move to layover.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, and the carries 60.
Moving on, agenda item number two, case C-10-14-104, C-12-14-105. Applicant: Anchor Point Development LLC. Request final plat approval of Anchor Point lots 217 through 302, and outlots P through T, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R-4. Location: northwest of Ida Streets and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. May we hear from the city?
This is the fourth phase of Anchor Point Development. It includes 86 single-family residential lots and five outlots, along with rezoning from AG to R-4. Department recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R-4. Approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the revised preliminary plat approval relative to this phase of development and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Rezoning from AG to R-4. Approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of the revised preliminary plat approval relative to this phase of the development and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Agenda item number four, case C-3-18-27. Applicant: Planning Department. On behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of an amendment to the Landmark Building TIFF redevelopment project plan. Location: northeast of 13th and Harney Streets. Bridget, may we hear from you, please?
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. So before you is an amendment to the Landmark Building TIFF redevelopment project plan that was previously approved by the Planning Board March 7, and then subsequently approved by the city council on April 17. And the plan originally proposed to convert a few of the office floors in this building, the Landmark Building, to a hotel, and a boutique-type hotel. So that's the primary, or the original, plan. The amendment is simply to substitute a financing source. Part of the original sources for this project was new market tax credits, and those credits were not able to be secured for this project, so the developer is now requesting the occupation tax be the funding source that is substituted. That particular funding source does require the City of Omaha, as a redevelopment authority, to designate the area for the project as an enhanced employment area, and then approve that particular occupation tax. The community development law also requires us to bring this project back to you as an amendment to that TIFF redevelopment project plan. So there are no changes to the land use, to the zoning. The project still complies with the master plan. This is simply a substitution of a financing source. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer. We do have the development team, or David Levy, who is the attorney representing the developer, here to answer any questions.
Bridget, I do have just a couple of questions still related to the alternative funding source, the occupation tax, as part of the financing on it. I understand that the revenues from that would be paid for by the people that stay there and residents there. However, what happens in the event that there's a shortfall in the revenues collected, the sources of those revenues, and the amount of money that they plan to use for part of the financing? What if there's a shortfall? I know there's a bond that's going to be issued, and then maybe that's, it's irrelevant because there's a bond issued for that, but...
Right, right. But the sources are, well, and you did ask at the pre-planning, and I'll touch on that, but I think I will defer that answer to David Levy. But the sources, we do have, we do have an enhanced employment occupation tax application that the city has received, and the committee has voted on to approve. But the sources of that occupation tax will be a tax on the room revenue, east retail revenue, so like the gift shop area, parking revenue, and then office square footage. So that's where the occupation tax revenue will come from. But if there's a shortfall, how will the project handle that? I will defer that to...
Yeah, because I assume the revenues generated from those activities would be used to repay the bond.
Correct.
Right?
They would.
And so if those revenues come up short, I guess is my question, how is the bond going to get repaid, then?
Yeah. I will defer that to David Levy to answer that question.
Okay. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Levy, Barrett Home Law Firm, 1700 Farnham Street. On behalf of the developer here, and happy to answer any questions, and I know we have at least one, so maybe I'll start with that one, if you'd like.
Now, do your spot.
Okay, I'll do that. So like with the TIFF project, a occupation tax approval results in a occupation tax agreement. So with the TIFF project, you have a redevelopment agreement. Here, you would have a very similar agreement. And that agreement and the bond documents that you mentioned put the liability on the developer, or redeveloper, for any shortfalls. So the city is essentially, in some sense, the city and the county is a pass-through for the money. But should there be a shortfall, the redeveloper is contractually obligated to make up that shortfall. By the same token, should the projections come in better than anticipated, the tax would end early.
And in that, I assume that that is articulated and conveyed in that agreement, then?
That's correct.
That that...
That's correct. Yep, and in those financing documents as well.
Right, thank you.
Hey, David, why did they ask for 8.7 million on the occupational tax, and short the mortgage came down a million dollars rather than ask for 7.7 and leave the mortgage where it was?
Sure. The occupation tax results in an income stream over 20 years. If at all, if the projections match exactly, it'd be 20 years. When you have a stream of money like that, you have to monetize that today because you need that money today to actually build the project. There's a financing cost associated with monetizing that income stream. So that's what's in that. That's the difference between the 7.7 and the 8.7, or the other two numbers that you referred to. One's 36 million in sum. That goes down to 35 million in sum. That million dollars is that, the difference between the 7.7 and the 8.7. So it's there, it's just in a different line item.
You good, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any, oh, are you a proponent? Any opponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Did he say he's an opponent?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, are you an opponent?
No, sir, I'm not. I was just wanting to speak on this letter I received from you guys.
Okay, seeing no other opponents, going to close the public hearing. Any additional questions or comments from the board? We've heard from Bridget. Do you have anything to add, Eric?
Just, the department recommends approval.
Okay. A motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Agenda item number five, case C-3-18-177. Applicant: Planning Department. On behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of amendments to the 2016 and 2017 action plans. Location: Omaha and the 3-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Good afternoon. Jim Anderson, City Planning Department. The 16 and 17 action plans represent the community development budgets the city uses to make improvements in the City of Omaha and in the case of the 17, or excuse me, the 16 in the City of Council Bluffs. What the 16 plan does is switches funding from a multifamily effort, which is going to be completed, to a single-family homeownership assistance. The 17 is a change of focus that the city is undertaking from a location in South Omaha to one in North Omaha. And there are two projects associated with that switch, and both of those will then become focused in that area and will also continue to have a focus until the redevelopment effort switches focus. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Jim? Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Any additional comments? We've heard from the city. Eric, do you want to...
Just recommend approval.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Agenda item number six, case C-3-18-176. Applicant: Planning Department. On behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the 2019 through 2024 capital improvement program. Location: Omaha and the 3-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. Kevin, do you want to...
Sure. So, just for the benefit of those in the room who may not know, the CIP, the 2019 to 20...
Kevin, sorry, I have to give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Kevin Carter with the planner, with the planning department.
Sorry about that.
First time, I guess. So the CIP is the city's six-year program for major infrastructure improvements related to streets, sewers, parks, and other public facilities. And it's updated annually. This year's CIP has a number of new projects, which you have on a list in front of you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
You answered my questions in our pre-meeting, but you're the one responsible for the format of this year's CIP, and you did a great job. It was, I didn't read all 170 pages, but it was easy to go through and pick out things and check on things. It was good.
Thank you.
You did, Jeff.
If you have any ideas for other, more improvements, I'm happy to hear them, too.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments for Kevin? Okay? Any other proponents? Any oppo, come on down. Name and address, please.
Sure. Hi, I'm Sarah Shirley, CEO of Live Well Omaha. My personal address is 4540 Williams Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68106. Good afternoon, chairman and board. Thank you for taking my comments. I'm actually entering neutral testimony, neither proponent or opponent. Just wanted to go on record with a comment related to the CIP. We, Live Well Omaha is a community health coalition of more than 47 organizations that all join together because they prioritize health, and the city has been a very strong partner, as they will continue to be in the future. For 15 years, one of our big priorities has been something called the Bike Omaha Network, which the vision was to create a 20-mile bike space for people to ride safely. It's not just about biking, it's about safe communities where people bike, people can walk, people slow down in the neighborhoods, and then there aren't those incidences that we don't want to see. So today, I just wanted to comment on one piece that was removed from the CIP plan this year, which was Leavenworth 31st to 39th. It's a piece that we've leveraged quite a bit of philanthropic dollars and lots and lots of time and energy from area and neighborhood associations to rally and say that a road diet could be possible there with the inclusion of bike lanes, which then would slow the traffic and create a feeling of safety along that Leavenworth corridor. Furthermore, now that the South Omaha Trail is open, it would open a gateway then to all the traffic that we know is coming from that trail, as well as, it's really the only straight shot for folks to bike specifically to connect to downtown. So I just wanted to raise that. We continue to be a strong partner of the city. We're continuing to work with the city to do a wayfinding network of signs throughout the entire bike network, and that work will continue. It's going quite well. But wanted to be on record that we are disappointed that that is not included. Also wanted to comment that I agree the communication of the CIP. As a health advocacy coalition, we're actually able to understand more of that and be able to weigh in and have the opportunity for public comment, and that's certainly what government is all about. And so I commend the city for that next iteration of how that's communicated. Thank you.
When you talk about 30th to 39th and Leavenworth, are you talking about having designated bike lane, so painted white? How do you reconcile the, there's a lot of development that's happening, and most of that, I think you'll agree with me, that most of the properties on both sides of Leavenworth are... are in developers' hands to build up or to remodel and, and, there's going to be a lot more traffic, I think, along that Leavenworth corridor. Doesn't that concern you about putting the bikes where, where all that traffic is? How do you, do they play well together when you have a bike lane?
So I'm not an engineer, I want to say that.
Neither am I.
But we've collaborated with lots of engineers. We've collaborated for a number of years now with Tool Design Group and with the City of Omaha Public Works and Planning. And there was a private traffic study done with philanthropic money that told us that actually we could retain, I believe, I'm not, I don't want to go on record actually because I can't remember, but it was a very healthy flow of traffic through that corridor of Leavenworth, still with the inclusion of road diet and bike lanes. Furthermore, there's a lot of safety data to say that if you have two lanes of traffic with a middle turn lane, which is how the cross-section was laid out, it actually increases the safety, increases the movement of traffic because you're not having that, I'm crossing against two lanes of traffic and not seeing oncoming vehicles. So actually, as urban communities grow up, that's where people want to be. They don't want to be where people are zooming through and not spending money, they want to be in a place where they can cruise by and have a cup of coffee and jump into these developments and actually spend money, spend dollars. And neighborhoods and their property values also don't want to see people just fly by either. And so that's, that's where we're coming at it. We, we do actually feel like it would be in the interest of safety of the neighborhood to continue with the project.
Stay on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to address?
I just want to touch on the fact that, you know, it's an exhaustive process involving many different, all the departments of the city and the mayor's office in preparing this document. You know, a lot of work goes into, many months of work, and the planning board's specific role is to review the proposed capital improvement program for compliance with the master plan, and we believe it does that, and recommend approval.
Okay.
I move approval of the 2019-24 capital improvement program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, moving on. Agenda item number seven, case C8-18-140, C10-18-141, C12-18-161. Applicant, Sean Negus, requests preliminary and final plat approval of Peaceful Oaks, a minor plat outside the city limits with rezoning from DR to R1, and approval of a special use permit to, to allow development in the Northern, in the North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Property is located within an ED Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location, north of North Crest Drive and west of North Post Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Sean Negus, 11828 North 34th Avenue. So I'm asking for the board to approve the final plat for this. I know it's been recommended to be laid over. We've, I've done all the due diligence required by the city to, to get this thing moved through, and I'd really like to not push it back another month. You know, I went to the pre-planning meeting, got everything that I needed to do, hired the engineer to submit everything to the city for the plat. There's only one document that hasn't came through, and that is a document from the NDEQ approving that for the septic system on the property. I would ask that if it was possible to approve the final plat and that permits were not issued until that letter and documentation of approval was received by the city. That's really all I'm asking for.
Is this your personal residence?
It is not, it's actually for my aunt and uncle.
Okay, thank you Sean. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents that wish to speak?
Bernice Pfeifer, 7806 South 98th Street in La Vista. I am the past president of the Northern Hills Overlay, and I specifically came down for the other project also. But in this case too, I hope that you will really consider that the DR, which we worked on for so long, approved by the City Planning Board and the City Council in years back, do require a minimum of one acre lots. Thank you.
Okay. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Did you wish to speak ma'am? No, okay.
I would say the same thing.
All right, that's okay. All right, going to close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board?
Do you want to address the concerns or the request of Sean?
Sure.
Thank you Eric.
Yeah, so this site is approximately a little bit over 30,000 square feet, not quite three quarters of an acre. Therefore, the rezoning from DR to R1, you do need a minimum of one acre to have a lot in the DR district. You need a minimum of 20,000 square feet for the R1 district. This area is, is programmed for low-density residential, therefore the city is comfortable with, with recommending approval of the rezoning to the R1 to allow the construction of the single-family home. Anytime there is a septic system involved, the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality requires preapproval when a lot created is less than three acres in size. Therefore, it's the city's policy that we do not recommend in support of final plats until we have that written correspondence from that State Department indicating that the lot is of sufficient size and, you know, characteristics to be able to support their requirements for the septic system, which is their review. You know, this is about as small of a lot that I've seen for a request for a septic system. Though as a city, we are definitely not comfortable in pushing off or recommending in support of the final plat at this time and, you know, just holding up building permits. We're not comfortable with that because we want to make sure that the, the lot is of sufficient size, that it can support the single-family home and, and the septic system that's required for that. That being said, you know, we are in support of the rezoning, the special use permit and the preliminary plat, but at this time, we would recommend layover for the final plat to allow that information to come in. Whenever we get that information in, we're able to put the final plat back on the planning board agenda. So really that's, we leave that in the, the developer, the applicant's hands to be able to get that submission to the state, to be able to get that letter of approval.
From experience, that NDEQ letter, are they on time, are they behind, or, or is there something that needs to be provided by the applicant or by the department to get that letter?
There is an application that the applicant would have to make to that specific State Department with the state of Nebraska. I've heard it's maybe a four-week timeframe. I don't know if that's accurate or not, I've never applied or had much correspondence with it.
Sean, you come back up. Address please.
Sean Negus, 11828 North 34th Avenue. So, all the engineering has been done. Essentially, all we're waiting for is a letter of approval. It meets all criteria for the parameters that they're asking for. They have a new staff member that approves these, and generally speaking, it's a four-week timeframe turnaround, but right now it's six to eight weeks is, is what TD2 is telling me, Thompson, Driesen, Doran, and my engineer.
So, so your engineer's already made, requested for that letter?
Yep, and, and also has asked them to try to push this up as far as it's going to hold us up. But what the response is, he was going to try to move it up on the list of priorities and get stuff done within the next week, but couldn't guarantee it because he is essentially a new, a newer member of their staff, so.
When was that request submitted?
It was, I think 30 days ago is when actually they, they submitted all that to them. I, I don't know that date exactly, but everything was done in a timely manner, and this is the only thing that's, that's holding us up.
So you're, you're saying that all of the other conditions here that have been outlined in, in the city's recommendations have been addressed?
Everything.
Other than the, other than the letter that, that we need from the NDEQ?
And that's, that's all it is. It meets all the, the percolation requirements, it has the square footage needed to do it. I mean, the science part of it is done, all we need is that letter. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of, you know, ridiculous to leave this thing hang over a whole nother month, and then, then I'll have to submit for permits, you know, plans and, and stuff after that for permits, just over essentially a approval letter from the NDEQ.
Eric, I understand that we're just going to do this for the layover. As far as you know, is this the only item I was hitting?
No, just looking, and I'll give our official recommendation here shortly, but, you know, there are six conditions that we're recommending approval of the preliminary plat. Some of that would be a revised grading plan, a revised tree canopy analysis, there's going to be a subdivision agreement that will be needed, so.
So the city hasn't seen those items yet?
No. And oftentimes, the creation of those subdivision agreements do take some time. I believe that if, if we move forward with the rezoning, special use permit, preliminary plat, layover the final, the applicants can still work on many of those items. I don't believe it'd be ready to go down to City Council by the time that the final plat can be heard next month if, if it's able to get that approval letter from the NDEQ, so.
Okay, thank you Sean. If there's no other comments or questions, Eric, can we hear the, the city's recommendation?
Yep, so the official recommendation is approval of the rezoning from DR to R1, approval of the special use permit to allow development in the North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions listed in the recommendation report, and layover the final plat to allow, well, why don't I leave those approvals, vote on those, and then I would recommend layover in a separate motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of the rezoning from DR to R1, approval of the special use permit to allow development in the North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the six conditions outlined in the city's recommendations.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, do we have a motion on the NDEQ approval?
Well, the department recommends layover of the final plat to allow submittal of NDEQ approval and to address conditions of the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Move layover, layover of the final plat to allow submittal of the NDEQ approval and to address conditions of the preliminary plat.
Second.
No, the applicant can continue to work with us, we have a new deadline submittal next week. If, if they have some correspondence from the NDEQ, they can reach out to us and, and we're able to get the final plat back on the agenda in a timely manner.
Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
I think we moved up to agenda item number 13. Case C10-18-169. Applicant, Melissa Brady, request rezoning from DR and R1 to R1. Property is located within an ED Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location, 13126 North 42nd Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Jack Brady, 131, or 13126 North 42nd Street. Just looking to rezone from the DR to the R1 to be able to combine our home, which is on a R1, and connected. The DR zone is landlocked, not accessible, accessible anywhere but our house, and just looking to combine the lots to ease the selling process at a future date. Selling two lots separate requires two separate banknotes, it's complicated, and we're not planning on doing any remodeling or changing of the environment back there. It's currently used as horse pasture and will be, continued to use as such. And if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you Jack. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Any opponents that wish to speak?
Chairman and Board members, Dorothy Poland, 130, 30 North 47th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I oppose this, and if I had information about the prior one, I would have opposed that also. There's a large concern among the members of that, our community in Ponca Hills, that Ponca Hills remains a natural native area that is inclusive of the Northern Hills Overlay, and the changing of DRs to R1s is very concerning because then we create a higher dense population, which we do not have an infrastructure to support. Along with septic, when we had our acreage, we had to have our, a redesigned plan through a engineering consulting firm to have an alternative septic field also, so I think that's something to take into consideration. But why I'm concerned is I don't want to see R1s go to DR. When you add those two properties together, it would meet DR requirements. The other thing is, I don't want to set, also part of this is setting a precedence, opening Pandora's box for DRs to become R1, and Ponca Hills is kind of a diverse terrain, it, it includes of the lowest hills, which are only seen in Iowa and in China. We don't want to disrupt that, the tree canopy, those kind of things. We also don't have infrastructure to support additional homes. I understand they want to go just pasture land of the house, but I'd like to see it stay DR. I also, when you look at the, see GIS mapping through your site, it will show you very clearly, it is a DR or greater size acreage population in Ponca Hills, so we'd like that to stay the same way. Also, I want to thank Mr. Solmanson for helps in finding documents, but one of the things, couple of things I have concerns with. The email was not correct on the letter, so I don't know how many people emailed and their emails didn't get here. I had sent a couple before I ever got it right. Also, 300 feet when you're talking acreages, that's not very many people that are going to know about what's happening in our neighborhood. Our neighborhood isn't my neighbor sitting 50 feet away from me, so I have that concern. I also, when you read the document of DR, it says, "It assures land is not developed prematurely and without adequate urban service." We don't have any infrastructure really. I'm on a septic system, I do not have city water, I live across the street from this property. I, that's another reason. When you go to R1, it says, "Single-family dwellings on large lots with supporting community facilities." What's the community facility? I don't see any out there, so I don't think we're meeting the guidelines of that. So also, one of the things on the overlay is, it says, "Native prairies, unplowed land dominated by native grasses and herbaceous plants." So we don't want to see these grasslands changed, we want them to remain native. I happen to live on a ravine, diverse terrain lot that is totally with tree canopy. I try real hard to not let invasive plants get into the forest because where can't we say, "This is truly Nebraska?" And that's what I want Ponca Hills to say. So thank you very much for listening to my concerns, and I hope you very seriously consider keeping the total property DR. Thank you.
Thank you Dorothy. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Bernice Pfeifer, 7806 South 98th Street, La Vista. I have been active out in the Ponca Hills until I followed my job, and I had to move south unfortunately. But I was past president of the Ponca Hills Neighborhood Association. I worked with the City Planning Department to create this Overlay District to protect all of the beautiful, luscious Ponca Hills area, which includes Neil Woods, the Hummel Park, Dodge Park, all of those areas where people love to bike and to drive out on a Sunday to enjoy the serenity of that area. I know Omaha is very concerned about having the environment protected, and we do appreciate all. the environment protected, and we do appreciate all of the work that the planning department previously had done to help us with our concerns. Um, DR allows for low density, um, and that is a minimum of one acre lots, and I'm hoping that in all of these, uh, cases that come before you, that you really do consider the minimum as one acre lots. Uh, we worked really hard to allow residents to put up single-family homes, but with a minimum of one acre because of the lack of water. I mean, most, most of the acreages are over one acre. Um, but the water, the well water, uh, we cannot deplete that well water for those already that have it. Uh, the waste, as Dorothy mentioned, is very concerning because you get a high density with septic tanks, and the waste, um, is of great concern. It's also says in the, um, developmental or overlay, section fifty-five ninety, is to the disturbance of sensitive and unique features. Uh, this is what a part, uh, if you know the Ponca Hills, you realize that this is an important feature of the Ponca Hills area. Um, and we're very happy that this North Hills Overlay, um, says that no removal may be of soil or disturbance of any vegetation or on within fifty feet of any land that contains perennial streams or like Shipley Creek intermittent streams out there. It cannot come within fifty feet of those. Cannot come within fifty feet of the native prairie grasses, which a lot of land out there is undisturbed and does contain the native prairie lands. And the water, again, the well water is not adequate. Uh, if you put in a high-density level of homes, will be very inadequate. And in particular, this case is adding on pasture land. Uh, please keep it as DR so that in the future anyone else, uh, needs to go through to be scrutinized for the minimum one acre. Do not allow it become R1, otherwise it, the future of Ponca Hills may be entirely ruined the whole atmosphere. And the city of Omaha benefits from this because we do, out there, have all these trees, all of this, uh, native grass activity that, for bikers and so forth. And we provide a lot of clean air for Omaha, get rid of some of your, uh, all the air that is displaced by all the cars and things, and all of the clean water, the hills that protect and, um, take out all of the waste from the hills. Keep this property, please, as DR in compatibility with the neighborhood larger sections of the land. Uh, thank you so much, and if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernice. Any other opponents that wish to speak?
Anne McGuire, 14910 Shawngaska Road. I'm in the Ponca Hills area, and I just want to reinforce and kind of bring up too, one of the wonderful things about Ponca Hills is that it's a big horse community. There are two large stables located on the same road as the, um, property that we're talking about, each boarding about, um, between forty and sixty horses, and, um, a lot of us ride our horses on those roads. Um, there's signs on the roads, um, that there's horses, just look out for horses. And I am really concerned as we get more and more dense, um, that it's going to take away from our ability to really enjoy our community and the uniqueness of it. And, um, one additional thing is, I'm also concerned about fire protection as we get more dense because we're just served by the volunteer fire department there in Ponca, and, um, I want to make sure that everybody feels safe and that we're not getting overpopulated. Thank you.
Anne, just a second, if you would, please.
Sure.
Everybody wants to leave this DR, but this is on the west side of Forty-second Street.
Right.
Aren't all the other lots on that side R1 now?
I don't believe so. I don't, I don't really know. I do know, okay, on Forty-second Street, on the left-hand side is the riding center, and there's about fifty horses stabled there with an indoor arena, and they'll go down the road to get on the trails. And on the right-hand side, at the end of Forty-second Street, is Ponca Hills Farm where I board my horse. And, um, there are, um, I think there's sixty-seven horses at that facility, and many of the riders will ride down the road there.
I, I thought you might know, i- i- just asking if you knew that those were R1. I'd, I'll let the city address that, but-
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any additional information, comments, questions from the board?
I want to clearly understand from Eric and the, the planning department about, it's, it's R1, and I understand his issue about financing and the split zoning and stuff, but if it all becomes, what he's advocating is all become one lot, right? And we had R1, he can only build one house on that, and there's already an existing house. So i- if it became, if we agreed to approve his request, it's not like he can go build apartments back there. I mean, what can he do without having to come back to the, the city and getting further approvals, right? Because I, I think that their concerns may not be without merit under the, under the R1 zoning.
Yeah, there's perhaps, maybe a little bit of confusion about what the request is. Um, the applicant's home is currently on Forty-second Street, has R1 zoning, just as six or seven other adjacent properties along the west side of Forty-second Street are zoned. Those are zoned R1. Um, in this area, there is a lot of property that is zoned DR, but all of it is within the environmental overlay districts. This rezoning request would not impact or remove that overlay requirement or any requirements that go with that environmental overlay. Okay?
So with a bigger lot, he can't go build a, a guest house behind him?
No, no, absolutely not. Um, the applicant met with the city. They wanted to combine all this property into, to one platted lot. In order to do that, we cannot approve a plat that has split zoning, so we said, "You need to consolidate the zoning." Uh, they were directed, you know, R1 zoning is fine, DR zoning is probably fine as well. Um, I mean, I think it's important to note that, you know, the minimum size requirements doesn't come into play with this request. I mean, this, this site with these two parcels is over four acres, you know, whereas the current home, I don't know the size, but it's, you know, maybe half an acre. I don't know, you know. Um, so that's not really applicable, um, because it's clearly needing the size requirements for either district. Um, so I mentioned the overlay requirements are not changing. In fact, there would be a note on the plat that they would have to comply with those. Um, our, the state, state of Nebraska requires rezoning requests for the city to notify property owners within three hundred feet, uh, so that is what we do, just to, to comment on Dorothy's comment a little bit. You know, I mean, that being said, I don't know if there'd be any impact if we zoned it DR rather than R1. Uh, just comparing the setbacks between the two, they're, they're very similar. I think only the building in impervious coverages are a slight difference between the two, but otherwise, there's no difference. Um, yes, if, if somebody wanted to build another home or anything else as far as more residential units, that would be a completely different process and not what is before the board.
Would that apply to future owners of that property if he sold that property? If, so, if he, if, if the owner of the property now sold that property-
Yes.
Would any future landowner of that property be able to build or expand on that property going forward?
For more residential units or something?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I mean, that, that would apply to anybody. The difficulty is, that back portion, it doesn't have any street frontage. That back portion, i- it does not front Forty-seventh Street, so when you talk about developing other lots or building new residences, you're getting into the whole subdivision process, you know, streets, you know, how, how do they have access? We can't just create a landlocked street. So, it, to me, I don't see a feasible way at this time if somebody wanted to split this up into multiple lots. I mean, that is, that is very challenging and would include, you know, a much larger process through planning boards and-
Wouldn't the opposition be better off having him have one lot? Because right now he has two lots, so if he wanted-
He has two parcels.
Two parcels, but if he wanted to, to say, provide an easement to the back and sell the back and let someone build a house back there?
We wouldn't allow it because it has to be, it has to be a platted lot-
Okay.
-which is what they're gonna do, because their, their front portion is already a platted lot. The landlocked parcel is unplatted ground.
Okay. But if it was, but if, but if it's all one, what, what he's gonna do is plat one lot, right?
He's combining his platted lot with the unplatted ground into one lot, and he has one house already. There's no more residences-
And on R1 zoning, you can only have one-
Yep.
-house per lot.
Yep.
All right, so I, I, I think I'm gonna, I think I, we're okay with this.
And, and that being said, I mean, the applicant is just following the advice of the city to rezon R1.
Yeah, I'm good.
Now, whether, whether, you know, to ease the neighbors' concerns, I don't think the applicant would have any concerns with, with DR zoning either, you know, so.
Jack, do you want to come up? Come back up, please. State your name and address again.
Uh, Jack Brady, 13126 North Forty-second Street.
Eric just made the point about doesn't, wouldn't think you would have any problems with going to DR or staying R1. You just took the advice of the city, correct?
That is correct. We came to the city board asking for advice on how to combine our lots and asked him the proper and best way to move forward on that. Um, he advised the R1 just because, as you stated, all the houses along that road are already R1, so we just went along that route, didn't really explore the option of going to DR, didn't really know that was an option.
I think that something else, and just, I think from a practical sense, needs to be stated for those of you that are concerned. If you look at that, the way this property would lay out as one lot, that entire panhandle section of it, the access where your house sits now that's zoned R1 already, would be ultimately consumed by a road to get back in there. And then you'd have that terrain back there to try to negotiate any more houses in it. Just, it's unlikely anybody would ever attempt that, and the, the criteria that they'd have to go through with the subdivision to be able to do that, it's just, it's never gonna happen. And so, literally, every, every lot along there is already R1. And so, you're, you're really, actually, you're making it consistent with everything else from my perspective, so.
And my understanding from the pre-meeting was if we change it to all DR, then that makes his house non-conforming, correct?
Non-conforming, right.
At further analysis, um, that was not accurate. The setbacks are the same in DR and R1.
Really?
Yep.
So everything would be the same between R1 and DR?
The only noticeable difference of the regulations is there's a slight increase of allowed building and impervious coverage in R1 compared to DR, but with this being a four-acre lot, I don't envision that ever being an issue.
I'd like to make the, uh-
Well, I haven't given our-
Just a second. Um, Jack, you can take a seat. Thank you for coming up.
Thanks, Jack.
It looks to me like the city made the recommendation with a purpose, and that is just what Patrick was saying. If, uh, if we left that as a, if we changed it to all DR, then it would be not compliant with the additional, with the existing zoning surrounding. Correct? Want to make sure we got that correct?
I don't believe that going to DR would create any non-conforming situation, but that's, you know, just my best analysis. So-
Okay.
Here as the city, I'll make a recommendation, as the report states, to approve the rezoning to R1. If the board decides to deny that and go to DR instead, I don't think that's an issue, but the department recommends approval to R1.
We make a motion to, to approve as R1.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Agenda item number fourteen, case C-ten dash eighteen dash one seventy. Applicant John Stahlnacher, request rezoning from GI to R7. Location 1103 South Twenty-second Street. May we hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative?
Good afternoon. My name is John Stahlnacher. My address is 3227 Hurney Street, and I am requesting rezoning from GI, and actually, it says R7, but I see the board recommended R5, and that's more appropriate. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? Any other proponents that wish to speak? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. May we hear from the city?
Sure. This rezoning request is before us because residential uses are not allowed in the industrial zoning district, as you're aware. Um, the future land use map for this area indicates low-density residential, so the request came in, it had mentioned rezoning to R7. Um, we're definitely supportive of rezoning to residential, uh, but we believe that R5 is a better fit, so we are recommending denial of the rezoning to R7, approval of the rezoning to R5.
One motion.
I motion for denial of rezoning to R7 and approval of rezoning to R5.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved.
Agenda item number sixteen, case C-ten dash eighty-three dash one forty-six. Applicant Security National Bank, request approval of a major amendment to a MD major development overlay district, One Pacific Place. Location 1120 South 101st Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board and planning staff. My name is Todd Sworzek with Not All Companies at 2285 South Sixty-seventh Street. Our proposal for the, uh, project would be a second building to the south of Security National Bank at 1120 South 101st Street. Um, we are requesting maximum size of the square foot building at eighty-three thousand five hundred square feet, which would actually be about sixty-seven thousand seven hundred square feet of office. We have some residential potentially on the top floor and some internal parking on the ground floor. Uh, we are also proposing what was previously a three-hundred-and-sixty stall garage, but it, after further, uh, engineering study, it's been up to about three-hundred-and-seventy-three stall parking garage, and we are not proposing to change any of the curb cuts or the access to the site. Uh, the reason that we're here is because there is a nineteen-eighty-five development agreement, uh, for the entire, um, site and the surrounding parcels, and we are looking to change that in three separate ways. The first way is we are requesting to have residential that was not anticipated in nineteen-eighty-five for this site. It'll be a small number of units. There'll be luxury apartment units. Uh, we're thinking three to seven in that range, probably about five, uh, units, um, maybe for the land and family, the owners of Security National Bank. Uh, the second request is the FAR, the floor area ratio for this particular lot is point five-five. Uh, we are requesting that that be up to point seven, uh, for the office structures on this lot. And then the third request would be for the overall increase for the entire development of the office square footage from three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand to- from three-hundred-and-ninety thousand to four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. Um, I'd like to take a second to talk about those changes and each one. The residential is fairly self-explanatory. It's a GO zone district. That requires normally a conditional use permit, but since this is a major amendment, the residential's been rolled into the request here. Uh, the second, the FAR change, um, we are still under what the original agreement allowed for office on this site. So, the original agreement allowed for one-hundred-and-ninety thousand square feet of office on this lot. Uh, with our request, the total square footage of office would be about one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand six hundred. So, we are under that original amount, um, which is why I don't believe there was any need for a traffic study. Public Works did not signal that. We had a traffic study done in two thousand and ten internally with Lamprey Nielsen that indicated that increasing the building to this size, actually, the building at that, traffic study was a little bit larger than proposed, uh, would still maintain a level of service of A for the intersection of One Hundred and First and Pacific. Um, the third issue is the overall increase in office to four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand square feet, and that's for the entire development. What was allowed before was three-hundred-and-ninety thousand square feet. Um, that is, um, under the total allowed office and parking structure requirement from nineteen-eighty-five. It was nine-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, and we are still only at eight-hundred-and-ninety-six. So, we're still under the total, total buildable square footage for the entire development. Um, so currently, the structure is parked to code, to the planning department's code, which is one stall for every three hundred square feet in office. Uh, we're parked right now at about three-point-five. The new project will be parked at about three-point-five per thousand, uh, which is over the park, the planning department's requirement. Um, we think this is adequate for a Class A office space in this area. Generally, we try to get our clients to move down from, sometimes they're around five, five to one for an office requirement. Not the planning department, just the market. However, we are always pushing our clients to go lower. Um, and this client understands that this, this would work for their needs. So, we are still meeting the parking requirement of the planning department. We're over it, in fact, a little bit. So, we think that, based on our experience with Exarban Village, uh, we're generally parking per gross square foot there. We're parking at about three to three and a half. So, we're above that with this development. Um, and the owners, the Landen family, are, um, are fine with that. They wanna move forward with that. Uh, we think that there's been some issue about parking on One Hundred and First Street. Uh, we think that could potentially be an operational issue regarding a no-smoking campus that some people do park in their cars along the street to be off the campus. It's a public street, uh, and smoke in their cars. Additionally, we've noticed that on Saturdays, the One Hundred and First Street still has car parking when the office structures are closed. Um, I can only speculate that that is potentially because One Pacific Place Park is to the south, and there's a very popular bike trail, and the park is used, and there's not a lot of parking surrounding that park. Um, so people could be parking on the street. Uh, that is speculation, but it would explain a little bit why there is still street parking there on Saturdays. Um, our company, NotAll Companies, uh, have reached out to all of the adjacent property owners, including the Wantanabi family. Uh, we've reached out to Northern Natural Gas, um, spoken with these people as well. Um, we've reached out to the local representation for the Coley-Jesson Building. Um, I have reached out personally to the Regency Homeowners Association and the Regency Townhouse Association. Neither of two, those two organizations felt that it was necessary for us to present at their monthly meeting. They didn't see any concern with the project. Uh, Ted Zetsman, our executive vice president, has reached out and spoken with members of, uh, ownership at Broadmoor on three separate occasions. They've had conversations. Um, so to conclude, I think we would say that, um, the next step in our process, um, hopefully, with an approval here, would be to move on to city council. And we also need to present this to the actual architectural committee of the Pacific Shores Owners Association, which has not reviewed a case in a number of years, but we've, uh, been reaching out to bring them together, and that would be the next step on our part. Uh, we think the project is exactly in line with the goals of Omaha as far as redevelopment of sites and, uh, considering this somewhat of an infill site. Um, it's becoming more and more of a walkable area. There is quite a bit of retail around. Uh, we believe that the, um, office would supply more customers for that retail, and we'd also envision that there would be more tenants for the adjacent apartments with the, uh, retail where people could actually walk to the, uh, to their jobs from where they live and recreate. And, um, with that, I would open it up to any questions, and thank you.
Todd, I'm very supportive of the project. I think it's great for that area. Just, uh, just one question on a comment that you made. You said you had conversations with the Broadmoor group, or someone from your firm did, but you didn't say what the results of those conversations were. Can you tell us how those...
Uh, sure. So, Ted Zetsman, our executive vice president, has had multiple conversations with, I believe, uh, Howard and Bob Stratton, the construction manager. Uh, from my understanding, the conversations were that they were a little bit concerned about the parking on One Hundred and First Street, which is a public street. Um, we did not see that, um, after repeated conversations, we're not sure how that, how we can mitigate their concerns about that. Um, we're still willing to keep talking, but I, I think that, uh, we would like to move forward with the project.
Yeah, I've been there several times for different functions, and the surface parking lot that exists already is half-full, but yet they're still parking on the street there. So, I'm not sure what they're parking on the street for, as you alluded to. So, it does occur. I'm just not sure why they're parking in the streets.
Again, I, I think that it would be maybe a combination between smokers, perhaps, but then that would only be during the work week. So, the weekends and the evening parking on the street to me seems very logical that it's somehow tied in to the use of the trail to the south and the park to the south, since there is not really parking down there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Any other proponents that wish to speak?
Rich Onkin, uh, 1715 South Ninety-fourth Street. Um, I probably, if you recognized me, you probably thought I would speak in opposition to this because I was so strongly against the Arbor Woods, uh, development. Um, overall, uh, I look to the city to be, uh, you know, maintain your principles and stay with your principles. I look to myself to also maintain and stay with my principles. Uh, this is a previously developed site. Arbor Woods Development, proposed by MB Dodge, was not a previously developed site. Uh, this is a site that's not gonna impact traffic in our neighborhood. And so therefore, for those two primary, uh, reasons, which is those, those reasons that I opposed Arbor Woods, I support this development. Uh, wanna see our local businesses and our local retail areas to be, uh, supported and viable and get what they need, uh, from our neighborhoods. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Any other proponents? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Danielle, come on up.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Danielle Dring. I'm here from Smith Slusky, eighty-seven twelve West Dodge Road, on behalf of Broadmoor Development and the Broadmoor Apartments at One Pacific Place. Um, you have heard some conversation from the proponents of this matter with respect to conversations they had with Broadmoor. I've received information from our clients that their, the conversations with Broadmoor were perfunctory at best. So, perhaps there wasn't enough, enough information communicated to Broadmoor with respect to, um, this proposed development. Broadmoor still has the concern with respect to parking and the safety issues that will be raised with the additional, um, additional vehicular traffic. Um, I, I sent in a letter to the planning board this morning that addresses three different concerns specifically. The first of which does relate to, um, the potential for residents to lose some of the parking with, with at least this, uh, proposed construction duration. There's been no information communicated to Broadmoor with respect to what SNB or Security National Bank seeks to do during their construction period, whether or not there will be adequate parking on the site, which has been referred to earlier in this, in our session here as Lot Five at One Pacific Place. The proponent has correctly identified that there is a major development agreement concerning this property. The major development agreement was, in fact, signed in nineteen-eighty-five. Um, I happen to be of the nineteen-eighty-five vintage, so if I do my math correctly, that's about thirty-three years ago. Um, certainly, the city has changed and this site has changed since then, and there will be a need to amend that development agreement. However, this proposal certainly circumvents the proper procedures for doing so. The procedures for amending that development agreement are actually set forth in the development agreement in sections. Section nine specifically sets forth that all amendments to this agreement will require approval from the planning director and the city council and by Midlands, who was the property owner and developer at that time, or the successor owners of the real estate described in Exhibit A. Exhibit A to the development agreement encompassed all of One Pacific Place in its entirety, and since then, there have been, I, I believe it was a replat that was done, um, a fair number of years ago. There's been no official amendment to this development agreement. Allowing any applicant or any individual lot owner to seek approval first from the city without seeking approval and consent from all of the other lot owners circumvents the way that this development agreement is intended to operate. Additionally, uh, the, Broadmoor has identified that the, the parking street, the parking on the public streets there along One Hundred and Third Street and along One Hundred and First poses a specific safety risk to pedestrians in that issue. I believe, um, the proponent identified that there was an in-house traffic study done in about two thousand and ten. Um, notably, that internal traffic study was not provided to any of the other lot owners with respect to this on-street parking. And while their proposal may be under the total buildable square footage and floor area square footage for the entirety of One Pacific Place, that poses a specific threat to the other property owners. It doesn't allow the other property owners to come to the planning board or to submit proposals to the planning department for any other additional development on their specific lots because there's a cap on this development agreement of nine-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet, which, to me, I have to admit, sounds like quite a bit of square feet. When, when you're considering that this proposal brings it up to eight-hundred-and-ninety-six, that leaves roughly fifty-four thousand square feet that's, um, able to be built, plus or minus a couple thousand square feet in there. Uh, that's, that's concerning because what happens if the retail area comes to the planning department and seeks to add any sort of additional square footage for any of their tenants or Trader Joe's seeks to expand or any other, even Coley-Jesson, um, acquired, I believe, some of the other square footage in their own building last year. So, what happens if Coley-Jesson wants to build on, on their lot? They're certainly going to be restricted by this development agreement as it's currently drafted. And with, with the fact and the consideration that there's been no amendment there too, that would restrict Coley-Jesson's ability to use their own property. Um, what, what we're really asking for here and what we want to make clear to the planning board is that the way that the plan has been submitted to the planning department for, for consideration and the planning department, it's our understanding, has recommended approval, it, it doesn't take into consideration the other lot owners, and it doesn't take into consideration the process and procedures that are required of these property owners to follow in order to do a development of this caliber. I believe that the proponent also mentioned that there has not been a neighborhood meeting. Um, at this time, I think what Broadmoor is really looking for is a little bit more insight and a little bit more information on, on how this can be accomplished. I don't think that they're objecting to the quality of the proposed development. I don't think that they're oppositional to additional parking by any stretch of the imagination. But right now, and the way that the commercial property industry has worked, and Broadmoor's a big part of that, um, and Broadmoor's a big part of the multifamily development as well. So, Broadmoor has concerns with respect to the total density and the parking ratios. What we found from other commercial real estate brokers in the area, I believe an email was sent to you, um, you all this morning with respect to what is actually required for commercial tenants and office tenants. It seems to be anywhere in the range of five parking stalls, a five-to-one ratio, or, or as high as seven. I know that there are certain office buildings in the Omaha area that don't need or necessitate that much parking, and perhaps this is one of them. But if, if the businesses that are operated out of these office buildings do have regular clients coming in during peak business hours, then that might be a consideration for this planning board that the four-hundred-and-ninety, or the four-hundred-and-seventy-seven or the four-hundred-and-ninety spots that might be available here may or may not actually be adequate for the use proposed. The other, the other consideration here that I have in, before the board, as it pertains to parking, let me see here. It, it's an analogy to whether or not this amendment that's being proposed can, can be parodied with a special use permit or with a conditional use permit. Um, whenever a property owner or a tenant for, um, for a property owner wants to seek permission from the planning department for a special use or a conditional use permit, they need to bring the property up to code. And it may be that these four-hundred-and-seventy-seven parking spots meets code. But at, at this juncture, it's, it's unclear as to whether or not the, the record that the city has kept with respect to One Pacific Place is adequate for the development agreement and with respect to the uses for these various commercial tenants, whether it's an office-based tenant or a retail tenant that's just across One Hundred and Third Street. I, I can give a little bit of an analogy here with the parking question. I know that when I've gone to brunch with friends at Wheatfields, occasionally, it's impossible to find parking in that Wheatfields area or within a reasonable walking distance in that shopping center from the popularity of Trader Joe's and the popularity of Wheatfields, um, on a Saturday or Sunday morning. I have, on at least one occasion, parked along that boulevard area that's One Hundred and Third Street loops around and becomes One Hundred and First Street. I know that at one point in time, I have made a U-turn around a median there, and there's not, there's no pedestrian, um, markings or cross signals or anything like that in that area that would ensure the safety of the pedestrians. So, I know, I know that that's a very big concern as well. Hi. I think that really addresses all of the concerns that NotAll has. What we're really asking is that the city lay this over for one month in order to give the property owners in One Pacific Place the opportunity to meet and at least decide whether or not they can amend this development agreement without the consent and approval from all of the other property owners. Just simply seeking approval from the planning board here today circumvents the entire intent of the, of the developer and of the various property owners at the time the development agreement was signed. So, for those... So for those reasons, we would respectfully request that this be laid over and that we can reconsider this in September.
Danielle, I've got a question for you. I'm listening to, to everything that you said, and, and I appreciate the comments. But I'm not sure I understand what Broadmoor's concern is here. I mean, they own the apartment complex, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Does it impact their apartment dwellers in any way? I had, I hadn't heard any kind of arguments to, to, to that extent, that it would. So I'm having difficulty understanding what their concern is.
So the concern for Broadmoor is really twofold. With respect to the impact on their tenants, the, the parking consideration that's being proposed, Broadmoor does not believe it's consistent with, with what would be actually required for the use at this Lot Five in One Pacific Place. That would mean that there would be overflow parking, whether it's along 101st Street or 103rd Street, or whether it actually overflows into the apartment surface area parking spaces. So that, that's one concern with respect specifically to the parking proposal here. Now, the second concern that Broadmoor really has is the procedure through with, which this has been presented. It, it did circumvent approval by all of the property owners, which is required in that development agreement. If, if Noddle and on behalf of Security National Bank and any other representatives on behalf of Security National Bank would be able to or be willing to have a conversation with the representatives from the other lot owners and other lot owners, I feel like it, it would be possible, if not quite likely, to achieve that approval and then to correct this bad record that has existed since this development agreement was signed. The development agreement contains the meets and bounds descriptions for the real property, but it, it has since, like I mentioned, has since been replatted. There's a need to actually have a development agreement that corresponds with these actual parcels and the property owners and the property lines that are owned by these different owners. It, it certainly would serve the city's interest to be able to track this better from a perspective standpoint. So that's, that's, that's another reason that Noddle's here today, or that I'm here today.
Thank you. Does that development agreement restrict anything as to what the, the proposal is here?
Yes, there are, there are restrictions in the development agreement. They're set forth in Sections 2.2. There are subsections to that, specifically subsections 2.2.2 and 2.2.5.
Which we don't have a copy in front of us, so I'm not sure what those restrictions are.
Sure. If, I'm happy to give you my copy here.
Or just put it on the screen.
Put it on the screen if you'll.
If you don't mind, I've, I've highlighted certain parts of it, and so you may see blue marks on, on this.
And while you're, while you're looking for that or, or making that, I'll just make a comment on the parking. The five to one parking ratio, in my estimation, I've been involved in several real estate projects for office space, and this use is not, that's, that's, that's high, five to one. A three to one is acceptable, and I think for the use that this is, I think a three to one would be more than, than adequate parking for, for the use that's proposed for this. So that's just a comment I want to make.
This might be amazing, but I'll disagree with my fellow colleague here. I've been in this for 25 years in office, and if it's three and a half, you know, you'll, you'll see, and especially banks and law firms, and there's a lot of, there's a big law firm there, you know, they've gone from private offices to open space to cubes, and this goes for insurance companies' offices, all types of uses at, at One Pacific Place and other office parks. And there is a trend towards consolidation, and, and given the cost and the, the high cost of land and the high cost of construction now, they try to put more people in these spaces. And sometimes it, you know, until we have autonomous cars, which could be 10 years or 20 years or never, I would say that, that from a office standpoint and a retail standpoint, three and a half or four is, is pretty low. I think.
Well, if you're, if you're including retail, depends on what kind of retail. We can get into this discussion, I think, all day long.
Well, you gotta make this available. But I think this is a, this is a large enough development, and there's enough concern from some of the, the neighbors that I, I think to lay this over for a month, and I know that Security National Bank is a beautiful conference room, they're a big conference room, they lend it out to neighbors and sports teams and Quanis Club and everything else. If they would host a meeting and, and at least have a conversation for the next couple of weeks, it doesn't sound like anybody questions their integrity, their, their quality of this development, and I think it's, it's a beautiful project, but parking and, and traffic is, 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 is an issue. And especially if one of the other neighbors wants to expand or, or the tenant makes changes there, I, I don't, I don't think laying this over for 30 days is a, is, is a horrible thing, and it'll probably lead to a better project.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Pate, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of address your question, but I, I want to make sure that there's a full picture of this development agreement. The development agreement is actually on record with the Register of Deeds. It's in Books 472, it begins on page 529. In the, in Noddle's proposal, which is, is very professionally done, and it looks great, all of, all of the photos that are provided with respect to this development proposal, I, I think really meet very well with the aesthetic there and with improving the area. One major concern that I had with respect to Noddle's proposal is a reference to what is identified as GSF. I, I believe I can assume that to mean gross square footage without kind of making up any wholly unrelated definition for a GSF in their proposal, but I will point out that the development agreement refers to it as a gross building area. Then with respect to the specific issues that I was addressing in, in the subsections and in Section 2.2, 2.2 really refers to the development plan for all of One Pacific Place. And it says in the development plan that unless it's stated otherwise by, by the development agreement, or, you know, if there's, if there's some other city requirement here, that the developers and the property owners need to follow this development plan. Section 2.2, I'm gonna center it here. Section 2.2 says Midlands, which would have been the developer and one of the property owners at that time, reserves the right to modify the development plan in any or all of the following ways.
And who's Midlands?
Midlands would have been the, let me see what the title is on their signature block. Midlands was a development company and a Nebraska general partnership that served as the developer for, for One Pacific Place. I believe they acquired some of the land from the estate of Carl W. Renstrom, and this is also signed, the development agreement is also signed on by the mayor of the City of Omaha and, and the assistant city attorney at that time. So Midlands was the developer, and the, the developer also was a property owner at that time. At least that's, that's my understanding of the records that I had.
So if I pulled a title, title work on this, any of the property in this area, would this appear?
It should appear, and all, or at least some of the property as of February 7th, 1985, all or some of the property should have been owned by Midland, if, if a full title search is being done. I have to admit, I received this development agreement, I believe it was yesterday, or it may have been on Monday. So I've, I've had roughly four or five days to work on this. So this has been a pretty whirlwind project for me. The development agreement does allow the property owner or the developer to make certain changes, specifically provided that any of the modifications do not violate the provisions of the Omaha Municipal Code, and that the city agrees that any or all of such modifications shall not be, shall not constitute a violation of this section of 2.1, right above it. 2.2.2 was one of the sections I mentioned that the, this proposal did not follow. It says as long as the site plan, the site development regulations are not violated. Midlands may reduce the number of office buildings from three to two. This development agreement does not actually contemplate the addition of any other office buildings. It specifically says from three to two office buildings, and it, it doesn't contemplate any more than three. 2.2.5 relates to off-street parking, and it, you know, basically says with, with the approval of the planning director and the city council, then Midlands may alter some of the design of the off-street parking and the location of that. Let's see. So long as such alteration does not increase or decrease the paved surface of such parking area by more than 20%. So this is the next page, by more than 20% from that shown on such lot on the development plan. This, this proposal is roughly a 30% increase. I mean, that's, that's a little bit different from what's actually set forth in the development agreement.
All right. Look, I thank you, you know, really, it'd be beneficial to have a copy of that to read in its entirety, just to, to, to understand it in its entirety, but I'm gonna ask the city probably to provide some comments on, on the development agreement, how it relates to this as well.
Mike, you want 30 days to look at that?
No, no, I don't. I, I, no, I don't need 30 days.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, members.
Are there any other opponents that wish to speak?
Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Todd, would you like to come up and address some of the issues that Danielle has raised?
Todd Swarzak, Noddle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street. A couple of the issues that were brought up, we are going to meet the city parking requirement. The site, as it exists now, meets the city's parking requirement. Our proposal will meet the city's parking requirement. So I wanted to clear that up, if there was any questions about that. There is no existing board for this development, as there may have been in 1985. So without that existing, we have gone property owner to property owner. All of the property owners have been neutral or agreed with this project, except for the concerns that Broadmoor has raised specifically about the parking on 101st Street. As far as any safety issues or anything like that, I would defer to Ryan Haas and Public Works, since it is a public street. We would be open to an idea of limiting parking to two hours at a time or something like that. I'm not sure that a fourth meeting with the one property owner who is not on board is going to satisfy anything. I know we won't be parking the structure at five or seven to one, it just won't, it won't work, there won't be a building there. And like I've said in the past, we've been trying to drive down our clients' parking requirements based on our experience at Exarban Village.
Can you tell us how the, do you know how the construction equipment's gonna be staged?
Yeah. So at this point, it is a conceptual project. We do not have all of the tenants lined up for the office. That will come at a later phase. We will work with all of the property owners on the construction. There will be no spillover parking into the Broadmoor parking lots of their, of their development. I anticipate that there will probably be for a period of time some more on-street parking on 103rd and 101st while the construction ramps up, until we get the garage portion of it done, and that will satisfy a lot of parking requirements there. And then the office will be phased in after that, so presumably that would take care of itself once the garage is, is built. I would also like to state that the, the original agreement, we believe, again, going back to following the procedures, that there were not procedures in place that said you have to meet with them, then them, then them. We are, we are going to meet, we are going to try to pull together after today and during this process, an art, a non-existent architectural committee that existed in the past in this property. And we've tried to do that so far by individually reaching out, but we will do that again when we have our elevations farther along, when our building elevations are a little bit farther along. I would also like to state that the development agreement allowed for 190,000 square feet of office on this lot. We are with the new proposal at 166,000. So we're less than what was allowed in the beginning anyway. Hopefully, that would mitigate some concerns. As far as any redevelopment in the future for addition, for adjacent lots, I think that they would have the same right that we have now to bring an amendment forward to the planning board and then the city council on their specific development. We are concerned with this specific development. We don't know what's going to happen in the future at One Pacific Place or the adjacent lots. All I can say is that those property owners voiced their approval of our project. There was no, there was no pushback except for the Broadmoor property. And finally, to clean up the plat, which is in meets and bounds description, the city planning department is requiring us to do an administrative subdivision. That will be taking place prior to the case moving to city council. So essentially, the lot will become, instead of the enormous description that exists now of parts of other lots, it will become probably Lot One Security National Bank, something like that. Hopefully, kind of address some of the, some of the issues that were raised, and if you have any other questions, happy to answer them.
One Pacific Place, so, so HGR has, has a new big building there. What's their, not the overall.
Exarban.
You mean Exarban.
Exarban, what I said.
Yes, sorry. Exarban Village. They're gonna take occupancy pretty soon, it looks like. What's their parking for their office building? What's their parking ratio for that building?
I'm not totally sure. I don't know right now. I can say that the existing office buildings on the site, the entire development, including on-street parking, is parking at about four to one usable, which translates to about 3.3, 3.5 gross square footage is, which is what the city bases things on, and that's what we are proposing here. So it's not, I, I understand what you're saying, that the tenant wants more parking in a lot of these cases. However, when the project is built with, especially with parking garages and the reality shakes out, they're not utilized. The top decks, you can look, there's no oil stains on these decks. And we consistently have the conversation of trying to push down their parking requirements because of the cost. This happens to be an owner who's willing to do that, and in the meantime, we're still exceeding the city's code requirement.
What's the, yeah, I know you, you've got your heart and soul in this, and you understand the project very well, and, but what, what's the concern about taking the next 30 days and, and just trying to satisfy some of the neighbors and seeing if there's some other solutions?
Well, because I don't think it's some of the neighbors. We've reached out to all of the neighborhood associations, we've reached out to all the adjacent property owners, and there is only one property owner who is, still has an issue with it, and we've met and had phone calls with that property owner on three separate occasions, and there really isn't anything in our development that can control the public street. The, I, I believe that one of the main issues is, the two main issues, one is parking on 101st Street. We don't have control over the public street. As long as parking's allowed, then people can park there. And at the beginning of the presentation, I'm not entirely. And at the beginning of the presentation, I'm not entirely sure that it's office users that are parking there. That it may be trail users and park users. The second part of it was the idea that we're not following the procedures set out in the 1985 agreement. We do believe that we are doing that, as there is no board that exists anymore, by reaching out to them individually and having the conversation. So, I'm not sure that we can achieve consensus with a fourth conversation, would be my concern.
Can I get a clarification in your interruption? But on your recommendation from the city staff here, Item Two basically states that any approval we give here really isn't effective until they meet these criteria. Number Two says, "Similar to five acceptable amendments to the One Pacific Place Development Agreement", which is the document we're talking about right now. And so, what I think that says is somehow he has to comply with the terms of that development agreement, get the approval of this nonexistent board or whatever the case, before this can actually be recommended to council, correct?
I don't have the development agreement in front of me. I'm aware there is some language that references all parties need to be agreeable to make the amendment. But I don't have that in front of me. We would probably need further analysis with our law department to look into that specific language in lieu of hearing opposition and bringing that issue up. You know, we weren't aware of that when we put together our recommendation report. We're fully supportive of the project and the proposed changes, the parking, the office space and whatnot. But with some uncertainty of that provision in the development agreement, it...
Well, it seems from our perspective, we, our job is to look at co-compliance and all these other issues and stuff like parking and issues like that. You know, it's been pretty well demonstrated that things are in compliance. What Broadmoor is alluding to is something different than us. It goes back into that agreement. And there's a mechanism in place, or was in place, for the mutually involved parties to be able to come together and police each other. They know better than any of us on what the parking situation is on-site on that entire development. So, if you've got other parties that are concerned about the parking, it's within that purview that they can come together for an agreement to allow them reform.
Yeah. I don't think, though, the parking's not a question of one of the changes to the plan. But there are, you know, the increase in the square footage for the building space, the residential units. You know, it's difficult. This development agreement is over 30 years old. It has not been updated very well in those three decades. And, you know, I can't speak for that. I was in grade school when that was developed, so.
Rubbing in.
Well, I can assure you with Noddle and Broadmoor's relationship in the past, that we will be including them during these conversations with the elevations of the project, with everything else. We're just not certain that on this particular issue, that there is any, we don't have control over one of the main issues, the parking on 101st Street. And we do believe we're following the 33-year-old development agreements, standards for notifying people, for trying to get people organized or aware of the project.
You're familiar with that development agreement, then? You've seen it crop.
So, from an industry perspective, everybody talks about building office buildings when they're 50% or more full. And they're comfortable building a 93,000-square-foot office building without knowing the requirements of the potential tenants and whether they need more than three or three and a half to-one parking ratio?
No. There will be a process of marketing prior to construction. Security National Bank has some overflow from other offices that they will be probably using some of the space with Security National Bank employees. But there will be more marketing before commitment is made to break ground on the project, to get near that 50%.
I mean, as someone that represents tenants and landlords, and I see office buildings, I can tell you, there's a lot more Class A office buildings that are closer to five to one than there are to three or three and a half to one. I just don't see any new projects, current projects, being marketed at, hey, we have three and a half to one parking. Bring it on. And I don't think Omahans know how to carpool. And I don't know if the technology's gonna change enough by the time they build this thing. I don't want landowners to have an empty office building, nor do they, I'm sure.
I would respectfully disagree with your comment as well, because I've seen office buildings... Yeah, I've seen office buildings with parking ratios of three to one there, and they have excess parking. So, you know, it depends upon the use of the building.
But I don't think it's our responsibility to say one way or the other.
No, the banks are conformist.
Well, I guess it just still comes back to me for that, this development agreement. Because we're recommending that you get a successful amendment to that agreement. City's only one party to that agreement. And so, the ball's in your court. If we move forward on this, you still have to figure out how to put these nefarious different entities together to come to an agreement. That's my...
Do we, Dave, or...
We haven't had a city comment yet, so.
No, but would we wanna try to move this forward without the city having a chance to give a review of that agreement? Or if we move this forward, which I think we all like the project, but if we move this forward without that, we could just be creating a mess.
Now's the time to lay it over for 30 days, is my opinion.
I'd get a recommendation from the city.
Yeah, I'd like to hear.
Okay, well, we will. Are you guys have any additional questions or comments for Todd?
I'm done.
Thank you, Todd. Danielle, the, well, do you have to retrieve something? Okay.
I left my water.
All right. I thought you were coming up to talk.
You'll have to get it afterwards.
I have a comment, but I don't need to say it. I think I've already made it.
Okay, thank you. Let's hear the city's recommendation.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, you know, the city is supportive of the project. But in light of what we've heard here, raising concerns about that provision in the development agreement that multiple parties have to be on board with the proposed major amendments, I think the proper thing to do would be to lay it over for one month to the September meeting to allow city staff to further look into that development agreement, along with the applicant and other interested parties. So, we recommend layover for 30 days.
I...
Do we have a motion?
I move to lay it over for 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, approved.
Okay, that was the last agenda item. Do we have a motion for the minutes for the pre-meeting of July?
A motion to approve the minutes from the pre-meeting from the July meeting. I don't have that exact date in front of me.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote? I think it's July 11th.
Rosehacker? Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Okay, do we have a motion on the minutes from July, July 11th?
I motion for approval of the minutes.
The meeting on July 11th?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Abstain.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
I'm sorry? Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore? I'm sorry, Morris? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved at 3:32.
Thank you, Lisa.